Okay, we're at five thirty. Some announcements, the Community Preservation Committee is holding its annual public hearing next Wednesday, January fifteenth at six P M. There'll be information going out by email. This is a good opportunity to have a say in how the money that has accumulated in the C P A funds is spent in town. There will be a Zoom link as well as in-person attendance. Marinac Valley Planting Commission is holding a housing summit Tuesday, January fourteenth. That's in the morning from eight thirty to eleven, being held at Northern Essex Community College. Everybody is welcome to attend, they are asking people to register, can go to their website. Call for volunteers, especially on the capital improvements committee, among others, and you can find those openings on the volunteer page on the town of West Newbury website. Regular business, item A is public comment, do we have anybody here that wishes to make a public comment? You're in none, we'll move on to item B, Town Manager Updates.
Okay, first listed item, senior packet, we've been, I received notice last week about a meeting this past Monday up at Whittier regarding their pending start of negotiations to the teacher contract. And so I attended that along with about eight of my counterparts in the region, it was pretty well attended. And I think it was, it was an interesting discussion that, you know, long and short of it, with regard to the point of the meeting was that Whittier was soliciting participation from one of us in the collective bargaining process as a municipal rep. And there were two, two of my counterparts who kind of reluctantly placed their hands. So I don't know which of them it will be, but it's likely to be either Steve Crane in Ipswich or Orlando Pacheco in Georgetown. So one way or the other, there will be a municipal rep on the bargaining team for the administration, for the school contractor, the teacher contractor.
Is that typical?
Well, I asked that question because I hadn't ever seen a letter like this. And I gather the prior contract and reading between the lines, it seems like maybe going back a couple of contracts. Tracy Blaze has served that role in Newbury. I hadn't seen a solicitation before. She, she didn't say much, but it seemed like she kind of tapped out and said she wasn't going to do it this time. So, but yeah, this was the first time in the time I've been here that I've seen a letter like that.
Yeah, I mean, three years ago, there was not one. It's a three-year contract.
Yeah, yeah. So they are, I believe, starting bargaining this coming week. So Maureen had been looking to get someone confirmed by Wednesday and yesterday. So, you know, yes, it was fine. But, but I will say, you know, part of the interest of the meeting was, to me anyway, was just mayors, managers, administrators kind of sharing perspectives on collective bargaining generally, not, not, not limited to just teacher contracts. And it was just interesting, some of the observations shared, which I think are consistent with what, with the experience we're having here. No hot tips?
Nothing to say on tape.
Next item, you know, we received right around the first of the year, we received the updated draft page, school conditions assessment. So I wanted to talk a bit tonight about what, what we anticipate for timeline for getting time for post-staff and kind of core reviewers, board members. It's been sent to Jonathan Seymour for further, you know, I'm sure he'll chair with Greg Hatten and Justin and so forth. We sent it to Elisa where she had been part of the selection committee to engage the consultant. So we want to provide people a reasonable amount of time to review it, make sure we feel the updated draft is responsive to the questions that were asked back in the early fall, as well as the expanded scope that this board agreed to fund in early fall. And like I said in my email, if we feel it's really responsive and therefore a basically a final document, at that point, we would do a, you know, broad distribution through the web and really every avenue we can. But if, if we feel like after review, there's still kind of omissions or material deficiencies, we would want to know that. So I think it's premature tonight to, to set out like a specific timeframe. But I did think that for the meeting, two weeks from tonight, even if you don't have time to do a thorough read, it is a lengthy document, and comp, and dense document. I'd like to have on the agenda two weeks for tonight to kind of talk about the schedule generally. I met with Christine earlier this week and we've talked consistently about a large public meeting in February. She raised the question, which I think is a good question, is, is that important? How important is February relative to like, and the concern she had were both bandwidth, especially with the push that's being made on River Road and some other things, the quarter study and so forth. But also, if we're talking about a townwide mailing, which we are, do we want to potentially look at a month where there's not any potential for like a snow situation? Because if you send something to every household in town, we're going to want to have a backup date if we have it in February. So it's just there's some logistical issues as well as the calendar's going to, you know, it's already filling up quite a bit with BingCon and capital.
Until town meeting, you're going to be jammed.
Her thought was May, and I said, you know, that's probably a good idea. And I wanted to bring that up because I'm, I think I'm the one who's been saying, oh, January, October. Part of my thinking on that was right along is really twofold. One is, we've been at this a while and I don't want people to like get impatient. But secondly, I know every single cycle, every single town meeting cycle, if we bring forward funding proposals for page capital improvements, there's always the question of, you know, what's the, what's the plan, what's the big, you know? And, but I did revisit today the list of anticipated F Y twenty-six page capital items. And I think they're, I think it's very clear, they're all things we're going to need to do regardless. So I think maybe I had overstated that concern because I, I don't, there's nothing that we're going to be asking BingCon and Select Board to consider or potentially voters to recommend that would be something that would be contingent on any decision. And some of this stuff like, you know, elevator or fixing this or gym floors, you know, things that we're going to want to consider regardless.
There's almost nothing at Page that is contingent on this because to get to a new project or a significant renovation, you only can do eight to ten years.
Yes, that's correct.
If you neglect something that needs work now, you'd be foolish.
Yeah, yeah, so I think let's, let's plan for the meeting two weeks from tonight to really revisit that timetable. But I think something in May, you know, could, could really work well. I don't want to drag my feet on this, but I think if we, if our goal is to really get as many people as possible there, we might be better.
There's no urgency to do it right now, so at least the document, have a meeting in May and it works.
Yeah, so I think that could work well, so I wanted to plant the seed for that tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand logic, the only downside I see is every three months delay, this three months delay from what we do ultimately. And at some point, there are going to be other thresholds we cross, other things are going to fail. And, and, you know, I can't tell you, nobody can tell you when that's going to happen and what they'll be and what they'll cost. Yeah. And, but I certainly understand logic, that issue for that.
All right, so we'll, we'll have that on for, for the next agenda.
And when will the videos?
So, good question, they did, they were in over the holidays to do the recording. I don't know when it's going to be available.
It'd be nice to have that done at the same meeting, basically wanted to kind of preview that.
Okay, yeah, Christine was going to follow up with Giannapp and see when that's going to be kind of complete and viewable. So, so I'll know more about that.
They're already, have they started that?
Yeah, they got in over the holidays.
They did, great, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they've done the scanning, it's just a matter of whatever render, I don't know what goes into it.
Right, right.
It is a hundred and, what, a hundred and ten thousand square foot buildings.
Right, right.
Yeah, presumably there's some time involved after the scan, so. Let's see, next one, the fiscal impact. This is another one, I wouldn't look tonight to get into a detailed review. What I would like to do is get a date penciled in that we can have the consultant come and present the report, ideally to a joint meeting of the two boards. But the version I sent out yesterday is different from what's in the packet, I think it is more realistic in terms of the school age children multiplier. But basically, this was just to acknowledge, we received that fiscal impact study and the, so actually, I'll just pause there in case.
So this is the initial one that's in the packet?
No, this is a revised draft.
Oh, wow, okay.
But it, but the revisions really weren't responsive to the question I asked. So, so we connected with them by Zoom. I thought, anyway, I thought my email to them was really clear, but they didn't quite get it. But then when we talked yesterday, they understood much better and they, and of course, at this point, they've built a model, so it's very easy for them to adjust some inputs. And so they were able to turn around and update the draft yesterday afternoon. That is now.
Well, it's the final, it's been yesterday, okay.
Yeah. So, so that's the one to focus on. And I think I did put in the packet a suggestion for a date for, I think, February twelfth.
For joining?
Yeah, and I meant to reply, that's good for.
Does that work?
It works for me.
Looking at like seven o'clock, because that would be after the, the normal, you know, typically it would be, Affordable Housing Trust and C C R C would typically be the second Wednesday. So I thought seven, seven P M.
And is that right, the planning board?
Yeah, yeah, they had it penciled in for February eleventh, but then, as a meeting the other night, one of the members couldn't be there. Ideally, everyone could be there, so. So if that works, I will confirm with Katrina and Jim that that would be February twelfth at seven P M. And that'll include the consultant presenting the fiscal impact as well as, we'll have the traffic study by then. And, you know, there's going to be other things to talk about too. So then this site build-out analysis, I put on the agenda under contract, it's not actually under contract. When I wrote the, or when I put that language together, I thought it would be by now. But I have not signed a contract, I think the scope is really good, but the, the way it's proposed, it was proposed as a lump sum. So I wrote back to Matt Loterman and said, you know, we look at the time materials. And my feeling is the work could be done for less than the amount of money that proposed. So I'd like to, I'm basically aggron. But the idea there is to get, and I don't know Rick and Chris, this is, this was kind of talked about it, I think a meeting in December, but just so everyone's aware of what, what we're looking at there, is to engage civil engineer who did the design work for one of the O S P Ds here in town, to have them do a yield plan for both conventional and O S P D, independent of the M B T A community. So I think it would be really informative and, so it's not yet under contract, but I think that's going to be worthwhile.
Is there a turnaround for that?
When I reached out to him, I gave him the timeline, so it's now been a couple of weeks because he sent his proposal between Christmas and New Year's. So, so I don't want to, I, it's, it's definitely, you know, important to get that pinned down so they can read the timeline. But until we're under contract, I, we'll make sure it works with the hearing timeline, which is anticipated March fourth of the planning board open here. Is now a reasonable time to mention about the S J C decision, do you want to get into that tonight or?
M B T A housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should pretty straightforward, simple.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess, I guess, you know, we won't know, you know, for, let, let's say they issue regulations and let's say it changes the timeline for compliance, would that affect our posture with regard to a spring town meeting?
Shouldn't affect a thing. The issue was, are they going to reject the whole thing or not?
Yeah.
We didn't think they were, they did not.
Yeah.
So it takes them a little longer to put the regulations in place, they're not going to differ much from what they are now. So we said it in the last meeting, we're just playing a silly game, let's, let's vote this thing and move it on.
Yeah.
I don't see.
Well, I think Angus's point though is that the deadline may be extended past December this year.
So what?
Oh, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, I think, I think then there's an advantage to staying on the current timeline because for some reason, as a hiccup, we have, we have a, a better shot at somehow modifying it and, and, you know, eventually getting it back.
Yeah, in reality, it's going to happen.
Yep.
So let's just embrace it and do the best, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
No sense in delaying, inevitable.
Good, good, okay, great. Next item, recent meeting with U P S, it wasn't actually a meeting, it was a phone call. But, but yeah, Wayne had reached out to me, they do have, there's a water projects draft, working capital improvement program from their last budget cycle from last June. And they brought in an independent consultant to help them rank and prioritize that based on meetings that that consultant's having with, among others, you know, city council, water commission, Wayne and his staff, so on and so forth. And so Park Corp is the vendor they hired. And part of why Wayne did that is just that, because there's a lot of different opinions, a lot of different projects. And he's had, it's been very difficult to like coalesce around a shared set of priorities. But also, Park Corp does not have any of the engineering work for any of the projects and will not have any of the design work, so they don't have a horse in the race. Whereas some of the other vendors the city's working with are very qualified, very credible vendors. But if they're engineering, you know, there's like this implicit bias they may, may have. So, so Wayne wanted to bring in someone who's completely outside of it and who has agreed that they're not ever going to do any of the design work, so they're kind of an independent voice. So he reached out to, you know, about our engagement in that. So I had, I invited him to the next meeting. I haven't heard back as to whether that works for him, but ideally, he would be, you know, Wayne would come to the meeting on the twenty-third, we could give, once we have that confirmed, we would obviously let the water commission know and, you know, to put in our two cents. I told him, obviously, to the extent some of those projects are either located within West Newbury's boundaries or have direct impact on us, such as, you know, the dam, elevation, or those kinds of things, those are things we're going to want to make sure they're building into their lead time to have us really right involved at the outset, so.
Not so ignore us.
Right, yeah, wow. So I'll keep you posted on that. Next one, just keeping you apprised, I, my guess is we'll hear back from that office by the end of the month and if, make sure there's no, you know, no concerns as to the draft amendments. And then we can go ahead and work toward getting that on the, on the warrant for three towns. The Leaching Field, we initiated that a couple of months ago as we were looking to update the capital program. So was pleased to see the results. They're going to be doing similar analysis at Page School as well. So I think we can expect a, a similar kind of summary report once that evaluation's complete.
So these will stay on the capital list, the plan, but just not?
Just be pushed out, yeah, yeah. So yeah, it was nice to have, no surprises.
Right, right.
That's a good surprise.
It was almost a surprise when you came down here, so, yeah. Couple of brief things I didn't specifically list on the agenda. One is the, the bridge, we, do I have anything on? I didn't, no, so we had that today, early today, we had the kickoff meeting with the resident engineer for the Mill Street Bridge. It was a great meeting, we had.
Was that here?
That was here, no, it was here. Wayne, John Eric and the deputy director from Newbury Port, myself, Bush, Caitlin, Jenny. And Clay was here and Tom Watkins, who's the procurement officer for Newbury Port, part of the finance team over there was here, and the resident engineer, Tim Lemire from G P I. And Micah Morrison was, was there remotely. So we met for a little over two hours, we went through a lot, very detailed meeting, really, really good, great. We touched on all the issues. We, anyone wanted to, we basically wanted to make sure from both, both kind of an administration standpoint, both on some of the engineering aspects as well as how invoices are going to be processed and how grant reporting, all of that stuff. We wanted to make sure we were all totally in sync before we then invite the construction contractor into the pre-construction meeting. And that's a meeting that'll be scheduled and facilitated by the resident engineer as part of their scope. So it's very, very good, everyone is in sync, it was, it was really a great meeting. And so G P I is going to be contacting us and our corps, you know, if they haven't already, this afternoon. So we could have a pre-construction meeting as early as the next week or two. So, and there is one, at least one critical path item with regard to getting the work started, which is to do with any loaming and seeding or not loaming, any like stripping of loan or tree work has to happen in the winter because of the bats. So, so we need to make sure that, that the contractor knows that clearly. Anyhow, so I think, I think it was up to a really good start. And it was great having Clay there and some of the conservation things, just to make sure everyone's clear on the expectations and.
Was there anybody representing Newbury Port's Conservation Commission?
No, and, and we talked, talked about that. So I, apparently Julia recently gave her notice, like very, very recently, it's not even like, yeah, so she's retiring.
Okay.
And they haven't posted the job yet, it's that, the information's that new. So they did say that they'd like to have that office represented at the pre-construction meeting. But it sounds like their, their order of condition wasn't nearly as, was maybe simpler than ours than the one that our commission wrote. So, yeah, but they're, they're kind of aware through Wayne's office, but they weren't directly attending.
Okay, so with the issue of conservation agent oversight resolved, there's something in the order that they needed to be there a lot more than?
Correct, yeah.
That's been straightened out.
It's, that, that is one of the follow-up items, it doesn't need to be, because I, I asked this, that need to be resolved before we have the pre-construction meeting and people didn't feel it. It, basically what it comes down to is the ConCon order, our ConCon order conditions had some very prescriptive requirements of not just resident engineer, but actually a certified wetland scientist being present for certain aspects of the work, which between G P I who has, you know, they're going to be on-site full-time inspections. These are things that between John Eric and Clay and it looked like were a bit overkill, like. And so, but just to kind of play it out, I had invited, or I talked to V S C back in November, I had asked them, what would it take to actually, you know, literally do this? And they, they did prepare a proposal, it's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And, and Micah said, you do not need this, he said, I'm sending this to you, I don't want to do it, I don't want you to spend this money. But, so, so Clay has talked, he's been talking to the chair of the commission and to make sure that as long as the spirit of the, you know, order is met and there's like qualified people observing and at times having qualified wetland scientists. And it seems like that's going to be amenable to everybody. And I made the point today that at the time the commission wrote that order of conditions, we are a part-time agent, we now have a full-time agent, that probably wouldn't have been foreseen at that time. Not just a full-time agent, a highly qualified full-time agent. So basically, the follow-up was going to be, John Eric and Clay are going to be working with Micah to, to find the number between a hundred and forty-four and zero. That's going to be kind of a as-needed, not, you know, as-needed billable hour type thing. I'm hoping it would be on the order of maybe twenty thousand so that at those critical times that you really do want a qualified wetland scientist, you can have them, but not something that's duplicative of the scope we have with G P I, which as you recall, is about two hundred thousand dollars that we'll pay for the resident engineer, so the idea.
Was the resident engineer envisioned at the time of ConCon order?
Who knows, that wasn't part of that process, so perhaps not, yeah. So yeah, that was, yeah, that was one of the more meaty discussions today. Another thing, we're working with Department Rec on updated field use speed, schedule and policy. Caitlin Barker and I primarily have been working on that. And we, we'll meet with the Chair Doug next week in anticipation of their next meeting, it's January twenty-second. So we're working to have a draft, an updated draft. We had a draft in December, we reviewed, but we're working to get that updated for their meeting in two weeks. And then finally, we made some headway on the pickleball identification of sites and doing kind of a grid of like pros and cons, so that'll be on your next meeting. I had a council meeting tonight, but when I did the track changes and I rejected a different item that was adjacent to it, ended up rejecting that and I hadn't noticed. So it had been attended for tonight, but we'll put that out.
So go it forward to?
Yeah, it's interesting, yeah, so.
I'm just going to talk.
Roughly, well, we, the universe was like about eight or ten and then it was down to really more five that had any apparent viability. And in my opinion, the, the top two are pretty clear. And I think if we want to do three, we can, we can find three, but, you know, we'll see what you guys think. But I think the shortlist is probably going to be pretty soft out of it.
Okay, great. Usually is.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I want to thank Jen Geary, has been really helpful in advancing that work. That's what I've got for updates.
Okay, great. Item C, department updates and discussion, the Sage Center has their January, February newsletter in the Select Word Packet as well as on their website, lots of good stuff going on. They also listed their code of conduct, I guess, I guess I have to do that annually or?
I don't know that they have to.
I mean, I didn't have the same before.
I had neither, so I was curious about it, but.
I was too, it hasn't been an issue with me, one.
Most people can get rowdy, maybe.
Probably that, you were the last.
It's just always good to reinforce.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, there had not been a code of conduct before Christine was hired and then she had put it in pretty early in her tenure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I think this is, might be the first time that it's.
Old people behave accordingly, not good. And we could hurt ourselves.
Okay, item B is the annual town election schedule. It's been posted on the website and it's also in the packet here. So nomination papers are available right now. Anything else to point out here, Angus, in Jim's absence that you want to point out?
Nope.
Okay. Item C is a notice from the Mass Police Accreditation Commission noting that West Newbury Police Department has been re-accredited. This is, is this a fiscal year? Oh, it's till twenty twenty-seven, great. Item D, Board Commission Committee Updates. First item is the Affordable Housing Trust is looking to submit an application to the Mass Housing Partnership for technical assistance with a feasibility study for the Mullen property. This is something that I brought up a few meetings ago, that we were interested in doing that. I had reached out to Habitat for Humanity to get some sample scopes and she actually connected me with this outfit and they would pay for it as well, it's helped us identify a contractor. So I just wanted to make you aware of it, make sure, because it is technically a grant. If they're going to provide funds, make sure the board is comfortable with that. I do have information on it, even though that's not really this. And this is supporting development of affordable housing within the town is one of their primary focuses right now and not many people are taking advantage of it. So me getting from Habitat felt that it would be a good effort for what we're trying to do.
Well, I assume we'll see the grant application sometime.
So it's challenging, it's a two-page thing, but it's a lot. So it's challenging. It's a two-page thing, but it's a live thing, so it's hard to print out. I saved it, but it just emailed me a live version. So, I mean, um.
Can you do a screenshot of it as you?
Yeah, I could probably do that.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of attachment and, um, you know, just a, a description. Uh, initially what we were looking to do is a feasibility study on developing, maybe putting maybe one or two duplexes on the road off Main Street. Um, rather than doing an entire feasibility study for the property. This is the, it's not a road.
The, the driveway that services the interesting house.
Yeah. And, um, and then we started after talking to meeting, she felt like probably better just to do a feasibility study for the whole property. Uh, we talked last night about developing that as a road. There may be a, you know, break-even point, the number of units we have to put in there in order to make it cost-effective because there's some deep issues and.
So you've got access at three different points, right?
Well, then, yeah, potentially.
Well, I, I think it's worth a lot of doing. I mentioned months ago.
Yeah.
Well, possibly using that for funds for, you said there would be something that I think the feasibility study is critical.
Yeah. Any particular things you would be interested in, in for us to identify is what we want to get out of the feasibility study?
Yeah, what the reality is is how many units you could put on there without making it, you know, so, you know, dead, too dense.
Yeah.
Um, we had the discussion a couple of meetings ago and everybody kept saying, um, the land is wet and it really isn't that wet. I happened to be talking to Paul Stigman on something else and he said he thought it would be pretty good on a lot of land for buildings, so.
Okay.
Um. Assume that's a, a pie, not a, a down.
I assume so, but then I was looking down the backside. I'm not sure it's actually that wet either, unless I'm.
Well, I mean, that was, you know, way back when that was proposed, um, you know, when, when the site was proposed, the septic was going to be down the lower part of the property. And so apparently there are soils down there, at least some area of soils enough to put in a, a large, uh, joint septic system, you know, shared.
Well, we got a little kick. We had a, um, a butter in here a few months ago saying, don't build on it and, you know, he's downhill and it's all wet and everything. I'm thinking, as I walk by, you go down, um, it's Church Street and then back up Prospect. This house is abutting all along. Obviously they all have septic, so it can't be that wet. It's kind of a ironic to sit there and say it's too wet when you realize they have septic that are functioning in there.
Yeah, yeah, you know, my, my personal biggest concern about that parcel is, is, um, is going to be the access and, uh, you know, I, I just think because of the narrowness of the right-of-way, but you know, the, the strip land that runs into it and the fact that there are houses fairly close to Main Street, which are going to prevent visual blocks. Um, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about that entrance handling.
That's got a study rule in the drift. That doesn't have to be a main entrance.
Uh, no, I, I understand that.
Bridge Street, very.
But, but, yeah, but I'm not, okay. And that's fine. That, that's kind of stuff we'll look at, that will be looked at with a study. I, I, I haven't walked, actually I think once years ago I walked that, out to Bridge Street. Well, no, to Bridge, I was thinking out to Prospect.
So you've got three points of access, which is pretty cool. Most parcels for a septic, you have one.
Well, there's no access on Prospect.
Are you sure?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, that's my question, yeah.
I thought I seen some.
I thought it did, I thought it did touch, but I thought there was a strip, no, okay.
No, there are a couple undeveloped lots.
Okay.
I thought I looked at the parcel map to cut out the prospect. I will verify, but.
Okay, so I mean, the old versions, but this was brought forward before Church Street was the main entrance and Main Street was an emergency entrance only.
Okay, and that would seem, well, I agree with Rich's comment about Main Street is.
Yeah.
Kind of high school.
Yeah. So that's definitely one of the pieces, um, want to look at, you know, types of housing and.
Right.
And again, is it feasible to actually build a certain number that can be cost-effective for development?
Yeah, and there's also, um, right now there's a big push to combine affordable housing and open space preservation. So that we're going to just ask them to consider that. It's not that they do, but you know, that they have a recommendation for.
It could be great.
All right, do we need to vote on that, Angus?
It sounds like, I, I do think given that, uh, you know, it's obviously going to, you know, the high-profile thing as it goes forward, I think making sure that the, uh, you know, the board knows kind of what the feasibility study is looking to achieve. Uh, that would probably be really helpful because I, I need, I need to see all the work done and then I come back and, and it turned out not to respond to certain questions that may have been easy to foresee, but, uh, you know, what, what would you say about, we're going to put it back on for two weeks from tonight and, and lay out like what the scope of the feasibility study? Cause I, I thought last night's discussion at Affordable, uh, Affordable Housing Trust was good. I had to leave a few minutes early. Um, but I think, and you might have some, it sounds like you have something that, that I haven't seen, uh, in terms of like a draft or?
Well, like just, it's a two-page application, so they, they are going to write the scope, um.
Oh, MHP does?
Yeah, so we just have to tell them what's important. So, I mean, I can, I can figure out how to print out what I submit. Are you saying the board?
Well, if they're going to send us, if they're, so they would send a scope and I just think maybe before, before it's actually like, say, yeah, let's go forward. It'd be good to just know that the, uh, scope is responsive to the.
Okay.
Board's questions. I think we did that last night's meeting. You had a touch on a lot of, some of the same items that were brought up these last few minutes.
Okay. Uh, Energy Advisory Committee recommendations on the aggregation, then dislocation. Are you going to run with that? Or should we just talk about it from the packet?
Um, yeah, we can work from the packet, but essentially we came, you know, the, the Energy Advisory Committee came up with three recommendations. You know, the first one would be the, uh, um, standard, uh, basic, basic pack, you know, basic service, uh, minimal requirement, um, and plus, um, uh, the balance, I think it's thirty-seven percent. Oh, it's called, um, uh, National Wind, um, and, uh, there are, uh, you know, E, E certificates or green certificates that go along with it. And that is the least expensive option. Um, then the, uh, the next would be the, um, the standard package. Um.
Is there like a, um, um, table or a matrix that lists the options somewhere?
Um, it was actually, I think that might have been in our last package where the, the options were shown and, and the, was that?
I don't think, that's what I thought were going to be seen at this one, in the dark ones.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
There were, well, there was an email that went out. Everything I got from Colonial went out in an email, uh, in the week before Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't think it went into a packet.
I'm just wondering if they like said, these are the options.
I haven't seen anything succinct like that.
So, so I, I can, you know, in, in, in general, um, there were maybe, um, eight different potential options, um, and and each of those options were, um, priced from three or four different potential vendors. I think it was three different vendors. And there was one vendor that was consistently below us. Um, and, you know, they're, they're all credible. They're all known. Um, so there was one vendor that was consistently, um, somewhat under the, the pricing from the other vendors. And, um, so, you know, that was certainly obvious to, to run with that particular one. Uh, there were, um, uh, different timeframes, different commitments, six months, basically six-month increments between six months and three years. So six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, thirty-six months. Um, and, um, uh, and then, um, uh, yeah, so, so that's, so the different configurations, boy, I should pull that up. And I'm sorry, I thought, um, I thought everybody had seen it. Let me, let me, uh.
So I guess one, one question I have is, um, there was some correspondence between Denise and, and Angus and I about when they come to the meeting and she was saying that we'll vote at the next meeting, but the prices could be refreshed by the end of the year. I mean, by the end of the month. So will that change your vendor selection? If the prices refresh?
It's not, it's highly unlikely based on, on what Colonial's told us that that's not, there's, it's very unlikely that there'll be any substantial change.
Okay.
Um, there could be minor change, but, but it's very unlikely that it will be anything that would actually change the, uh, you know, change the decision point. That's why you get the, this preliminary pricing or reference pricing that, that's not what they call it, but you know, it's essentially to get a first look and see which vendor makes the most sense and what, and what the other pricing is. So, the indicative price of that, thanks.
Um, okay, so then when we vote on it at the next meeting, we're not going to have to revote when the prices are refreshed?
No.
That was.
That would not expect it.
Okay, great. That's what I told her, but I just want to make sure that was correct.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And then, um, so once they go out for their final pricing, you know, for the real pricing, uh, essentially the, we, we have to give approval for, I think Angus, you know, to, 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 to give a go ahead. Um, unless there's some dramatic change, which is unexpected. Um, and, but once they go out for approval, then the turnaround is very quick. Um, it's, you have like a day to, to commit.
Okay.
But the indicative pricing is generally, you know, very, very, very indicative.
So that will be on for two weeks from tonight for the board to vote. Uh, and so you'll have the complete information and, and whatever I get, I can read forward the thing from before December, but there's before Christmas, but there's so much information, it can be, it can become.
Yeah, I was just looking for a simple table. It goes to the options. This is what.
That's all I want to see too.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, it wouldn't hurt if, if it's possible to pop it up there. Um, just, and, and I can real quickly explain to you what's there.
Okay.
From, from what we received from Denise.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the date? September fifth?
Yeah, 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 it's right there. Yeah, so this, I think I'd, yeah, so it was, uh, well ahead of Christmas actually, so I think I had forwarded this when it came in, but I didn't put it in the packet because it's not before you for a vote.
Yeah.
So I knew you had it in your inboxes, but I didn't want to, it's so much information that it can become really daunting. Uh.
But just to go over it quickly, your eyesight may be better in mind, but I'm going to have to get over here.
I, I, I zoomed in a little bit.
Right, but.
So across the top, you have different vendors?
And I'm just going to do a, uh, screen share for, uh, Brad, whoever else is watching.
Um, so across the top, you have, um, three different vendors. Um, this constellation, um, direct energy, dine energy, and okay, so there actually were four at the end, um, not three. Um, and, uh, direct consistently is the lowest price. Um, the, uh, the rows are, um, the bold of the low, of, of, for the rows, um, the bold type above indicates what the mix is. Uh, so the standard retail, enter the electric supply is, you know, basically that's what is required by, by a mass D O R, um, for the mix. Um, and then below that is, uh, you know, retail supply through purchase of the National Wind Rex, um, you know, basically maxing out, um, from the sixty-three percent required mix up to thirty-seven percent. So the requirement is that sixty-three percent represents some form of renewable energy. Some of it's, uh, class one mass Rex. It's, it's a whole mix of different, different types. Some of it is your legacy hydro, um, uh, little micro hydro. It's, it's, it's a mix of all sorts of different things that add up to thirty-seven percent or to sixty-three percent, some of which you arguably would look cross-eyed when you were told that it was renewable energy, but that's what's allowed. Um, see, you run down, the next one down is, uh, uh, yeah, so there was thirty-seven percent, the National Wind Rex, then, uh, mass class one Rex, uh, five percent, um, uh, class one, ten percent, twenty-five percent, and, uh, and then, um, and then the balance, uh, all, all class one. So you know, the first, the first category is going to be, um, uh, the balance of thirty-seven percent would be paired up with National Wind. Um, and the second will be the, uh, standard retail supply requirement. And then the third one will be the, uh, you know, what I guess you would call the premium green variety, which is all, the balance all made of, of, uh, mass class one, uh, Rex.
So these are three options?
Three options.
So it's one, two and three?
Right, right.
So why would we not go with one?
Why would you not go with one? To give, uh, consumers options.
Okay.
Um, uh, I mean, you could go with just one, but, um, there's no disadvantage to giving people options.
Alright.
So the default is going to be, um, the lowest price, the lowest cost.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's the second, the second, well, actually it's hard to say what the second is. The second is what somebody else would opt in to.
Okay. And why not go with all eight then, if there's none?
Um, because it's way too confusing.
Okay.
Yeah, there's way too much choice at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So, so, you know, you give the lowest priced option as a lead. The second is the default that you would get if you were just sticking with utility and the third is uh, the greenest option you could.
Okay, I see. Thanks for that. All right.
Which is the most expensive by, I think, a couple of pennies, a kilowatt hour, if I remember right. Um, so using say eighteen months as, as a reference. Um, so, um, it's fifteen point four cents per, you know, call it fifteen point, fifteen and a half cents per kilowatt hour. And if we, if you can scroll up um, to the, uh.
What's the default?
The, the default is, uh, uh, twelve point four.
Okay.
And actually the National Wind Rex, it says twelve point five. I may have this, maybe, yeah, actually that's right. The National Wind Rex is not the lowest price.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's still, it's still better by a couple of cents per kilowatt hour than going with the utility rate.
Is that considered not considered the default at the fourteen?
That is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the V-Rex, the second one down, thirty-seven percent V-Rex, that'll be the default.
So, and then one of the, uh, the board records going to be asked to also confirm the term, correct?
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, the options are, the, the reasonable options really are eighteen months and, and, um, uh, thirty months.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, we could go into that, but we sort of talked that through that with Colonial and, and it makes sense that, um, that you would do it that way because of seasonality and how, how, how prices change, um, based on time of year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so their experience is that the eighteen month or thirty month periods are, are, you know, that, that's the optimal way to do it.
Okay. And will these prices be changed at our, our next meeting? I mean, how often did we get refreshed?
Yeah, that's one. So this is the indicative pricing right here. So when we get the real pricing.
Which will be for the next meeting?
Which will be for the next meeting. It could change a ton of it.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, based on experience, their experience, it's not likely to change much. And if it does change, it could change up, it could change down.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great.
So they will be attending the next meeting and, uh, uh, so the intent two weeks from tonight is that the board will have sufficient information to make a vote. And then, uh, we have a meeting scheduled, uh, or penciled in the, the next day with them to, to deal with any, uh, follow-up or I don't know what needs to be signed or whatever, but it's, by the end of the month, this is kind of the hard deadline to meet the April first rollout.
Yeah, right.
So could we have that same table updated in the packet just so that it's clear what we're?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole thing is just three options.
Well, yeah, actually when we, I think we'll just be repricing the three options. We.
But we haven't voted almost yet, right? Isn't that the point that we're voting on the three options at the next?
I, I guess they can go back out for the whole, the whole table. Um.
I mean, that's what we're voting on, right?
Well, yeah, ultimately, um, you know, we have to give them guidance in what they go out for, for, and, and I don't recall if it's a problem for them to go back and, and reprice the entire, uh, the entire range.
Mm-hmm.
Um,
if the committee's got it narrowed down into the three options, I think we have to go much deeper than that in my opinion, but if you want to.
If it's not hugely open, I'm going to do it. It seems like it would be pretty odd.
We, there was a, an invite that went out that we received today. Um, I don't recall what the date was.
But I think the, it was maybe yesterday for the twenty-four. I think, I think Mark Capadonna sent something.
Right, yeah, I haven't responded. I actually want to talk with you about it because I saw Chip was not copied on that.
Oh, I didn't notice, yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay. Great, thanks for the.
Sure.
Explanation.
Yeah, glad we got you on for tonight because it's, yeah, it's when it comes. Yeah, glad we got you on for tonight because it's, yeah, it's when it comes to a vote, the board's gotta have what you need to. And so, so we'll send out any new information kind of more on a real-time basis and make sure that everyone's ready to vote.
All right, action items. I M A is continued public hearing regarding the petition to install electrical conduit. And there is no drive right away. So we have the bond in here.
Make it easy, just make a motion.
Yep.
We need to, did you just reopen the public hearing? Do we need to reopen it? Because we can.
I doubt I heard her reopen it.
Okay.
I don't remember formally opening it last time.
Uh, no, you did. You did.
Yeah.
And then we continued, you continued it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Because I think we made that point.
Right.
To make sure.
Right.
But if it's continued, you're not reopening it, are you?
I want you just to open the envelope and we'll cover it.
So what is the motion?
So you're just saying to reopen the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the one thousand one and approve the installation of the conduit as presented.
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten, I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Right. Discussion ends the fifteen versus ten. That's been resolved.
Uh, yeah, he, you could see that he, he felt it was, you know, he said they could change it. He felt ten was, was enough to secure the town's interests and did say if the board wanted to change it, he would, you know, request a vote contingent on that, rather than another continuation.
So you find the ten first?
I'm wondering if I.
Okay, all on the paper?
Great.
And now I have to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Public hearing is formally closed.
All right, so I'll check with Rebecca tomorrow on what, what documents may need to be signed and, and if so, we'll make them available this weekend.
Great. Thank you for resolving that last minute pickup.
No trouble. It was, it was, I, I will be honest, when the last meeting, I hadn't totally focused on the fact it was like a conduit versus a pole. And so it's a different thing.
Yeah, so now we have the.
Yeah, so like, that's part of why I was kind of, I was envisioning a multiplier of, of this, like, every time we get a poll. And I wasn't really, I hadn't, because to be honest, I, I got the information like two days before and I just hadn't really focused on it until in the meeting. And I was like, oh, so.
These are pretty routine.
The poll petitions aren't typically routine.
They go the right way.
Yeah.
Another comment to make relative to it, the bond, as you saw, that cost was a hundred dollars.
Right, right.
Bonds are obviously, the company gets rated, every job you bond, if you do well, your rating can actually go down. So that indicates the company, they're paying like fifty cents. Obviously, they perform and haven't defaulted on bonds. Doesn't cost you much to get a bond.
Yeah.
If you're a good vendor and you've got a good bonding company, so it shouldn't be something to be fearful in the future of an effort.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't real clear between whether the, the home builder or the person installing the electrical or it turned out it all worked out, you know, so.
They didn't even seem to flinch based on the dialogue.
No, yeah.
A hundred bucks you won.
Yeah.
Well, also, I mean, there didn't seem any hesitation of what do I do with this?
Right.
It seems like it's not that unusual.
Right, right.
All right, I have a B, not a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing to exercise the town's chapter sixty-one, right? The first refusal for thirty and thirty-two Ash Street. Though we did not receive feedback from any board committee on this.
Uh, so we, uh, I think back in, you know, some time ago, you, I think, had had in your pack that the town council confirmation had all met the standard for notice. My office keeps a spreadsheet of all the parties and interests or town, town entities that are required to receive it. We did, we received confirmation from planning board, assessors, concom, finance committee, historical commission, open space committee, parking rec commission, and water commission, all specifically confirmed they received it. The only ones who gave substantive responses were, in addition to just acknowledging receipt, were assessors and historical commission, both of whom stated they had no, no interest in seeing the town exercise. And with the passage of time, once people have been given a time, it's presumed to be no interest, so, yes.
Right, any discussion on this matter?
See the interest of the town in it either, especially at the price.
Right, right, yeah. There was a three hundred and thirty, well, six, six, so it'd be three thirty per, per lot. Yeah.
Right, do we have a motion on that?
Uh, yeah, move it to the town. Pass on its right first refusal.
Second.
I, I would just note that we, we had been, we had thought we were, were ready for this at the December nineteenth meeting and in the runoff for the meeting, I was rereading the town's policy on exercise of chapter sixty-one and realized that under our local policy, it calls for notice to direct the butters for this decision. Under state statute, you need to give notice to the butters if you had decided to exercise the right of first refusal. There is then a public meeting where you have notice. Because of our local policy, we actually have to send two sets of butters notices. So I just think that's something we might want to look at in the future because it, it slowed down this, which isn't a huge deal. The seller was not thrilled, but it's, it's fine. But it's more just another example of like the things that bogged down my office because like, you know, I don't know, I would just, you know, suggest like if we're meeting state statute and our policy is very good, it goes above and beyond a lot of ways, but to also send a butter notice because you're deciding to exercise or not, it's just like extra work.
And it's really not, I mean, the point of it is, is this of value to the town? So the butters preferences really are not part of the decision.
Well, and you'd like to think that with, with all those parties and interests that I listed, yeah. That's a pretty good representation of the, the town's interests, yeah. So if none of those public bodies say this is of interest, might a specific resident disagree. Well, of course, someone might disagree, but it seems like their interests are, the residents' interests are very well secured, I would say, by our policy where this list of this distribution that my office sent out is much broader than what the state defines.
Yeah, I, I guess the only, the thought that I would have in reply to that though is that if you were to look at the parcels on the three lots on Middle Street between Kimball and Ash Street, it brought out a fairly passionate group of residents who had they not had an opportunity to at least voice what they, what they felt and hear back, would probably have been less happy than they were. And they weren't happy in the end, but they probably would have been even less happy if they hadn't had a chance to at least voice their, their, their feeling.
That's fine. It just, it, it, it gobbles up a bunch of time. That's all I'm saying. And that particular one gobbled up. This, this didn't take up much, a huge amount of time. That one took up several dozens of hours of time. Is that a good trade-off? Because I don't disagree with what you're saying, but don't pretend that doesn't undermine our ability to do all the other things we're trying to do. So if we're doing every last thing to the nth degree, there's a breaking point. That, that's my only point is.
So is this a select word policy or?
Yes, yeah.
So that's something that we.
Yeah, so it's something we've put on the table in the future.
So you have a running list of things, policies that you, I would add that and let's just.
Yeah, we'll talk about it that time, so.
Okay, great. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I see a request to authorize the proposed River Road heavy commercial vehicle exclusion.
As we discussed before, I remember at the time, it's like the two vehicles, it's limited and they said, you already got everything done.
Well, I still think we ought to talk about it because I, my concern is if we propose something to mass D O T that seems unnecessary, then our future, we're possibly not continuing this seriously.
Well, the way it was left last time, as I said, there was two vehicles on the whole side that hit. And it's probably the one parcel that lives down there that has a, their own business. The truck is not going to go River Road in general. This is not a shortcut.
Right. My other thought, but it talked about the bridge diversion. I mean, I think I'd rather have a truck go on River Road than go over the bridge if it's over height.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
So they can't make the turn if they're at the end of Bridge Street and they're confronted by the bridge, they can't negotiate that turn to go back up church. I, I know that's a tight, it's a, you know, pretty acute angle, but
I, I just remember that being one of the factors in the whole bridge discussion was that let's put the sign there so they can take a right on River Road instead of continuing to go with the bridge.
There's a lot less destructive scenario and it's not going to happen hopefully much. Like to see them turn around the little parking and go the other way, but probably unrealistic too.
So I didn't, or maybe I missed it, but I didn't see in this application any discussion of allowing traffic, like delivery trucks to people that live on River Road. I mean, how? That seems to be a flaw also. I mean, that's what was talked about, but.
Same with, there's going to be new houses built and then a subdivision, how's that going to get in there?
I mean, but, but that's all dealt with in the, in the M U T C D, the Massachusetts. Like those are not subject to a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion.
So how would you, how would you enforce that as well?
Enforcement on these things is always a challenge.
But that's, yeah, I think local traffic is allowed, you know, if it's servicing. You know, a, a resident, existing residence or a residence that's going to be built, that's allowed.
Right. So I guess in reality, I don't know how much truck traffic we're going to prevent by this.
Definitely not much, but I don't think that road can sustain much.
Well, I mean, it, I don't feel like this application, I mean, yes, the River Road is in danger. But it doesn't directly correlate trucks causing that danger or being at risk because of the low, you know, amount of trucks that use that road. But it's, I, I can't see that they would approve this. I mean, is there a belief by the committee that will be approved by D O T?
I think there's hope. I, I, as far as a belief, I mean, we're you know, we have no reason to disbelieve because to think there's a legitimate argument that, you know, given you know, the foundation of the road, the road that is, is very questionable. We, you know, we don't know what it is. And, and, you know, based on the appearance of the surface, it, it looks like the foundation must deflect a lot because the road surface has a lot of cracks in various directions, you know, which is indicative of, of poor foundation. And so, you know, we don't know what the threshold is. Nobody knows what the threshold is. You know, where, you know, where, you know, which, which is the last drop. And it's like the whole road is going to fail at once, but you only need one spot to fail for it to result in either a closed road or, or something worse.
And to me, the part that seems most susceptible to failing is by the field. I mean, that's just a visual.
Well, actually, you know, in the tight corners farther up the road, you know, near the area where Swallows live, you know, there's probably, probably a quarter mile there where the road is quite narrow, it's very winding. The bank below the road is very steep. And if you were to go down below and, and sort of walk the shore, which you find is several locations where there are maybe shouldn't say several, at least a couple of locations where there is a, a deep erosion into the, into the shore, you know, into the hillside or the, the bank. And I, you know, I, I don't know what the threshold is there.
Yeah, I guess my, my point is just that, you know, if there is, it sounds like potential for damage and we're not restricting all trucks, you know, I mean, I don't see that this will actually do anything.
Well, when you say not restricting all trucks, you mean because local traffic can go through there?
Yeah.
But, but, you know, the nature of stuff like this is that it's repetitive, you know, it's, it's cyclical damage.
But what truck would use this road?
Somebody who made a mistake.
But if, if they're made of a stake, they're not.
It's not repetitive damage.
Yeah, and, and if you're made of a stake, you're not, you know, it's not gonna, you're not gonna not make a mistake because it's restricted. I mean, if you made a mistake, you're on the wrong.
Well, well, if there's a sign that says you can't go on this road with whatever the vehicle is, that you don't think it's any less likely. You think people just don't notice those signs periodically.
Well, based on our experience with the bridge, I would say.
You know, I think some of the times of the bridges, I mean, with, with this road, you have to turn onto the road. With a bridge, you're just, you know, the, the person who hit the bridge the last time was probably just continuing through. You didn't make a conscious effort to turn onto a road.
Well, I mean, so is there a downside if we submit an application that we don't believe is necessary or?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know what the downside would be.
You alluded to it at the beginning, it is credibility.
I'm thinking a middle road, I'd love to have a heavy vehicle exclusion on that. And if we kind of blow our, you know, interests with D O T by submitting something like this.
I, I.
I don't know, that's my.
Yeah, yeah, it seems far-fetched to me that they would make that, that they would say, you know, there's, there's the, there's the boy who cried wolf. We're not paying attention to them anymore. I, I, that seems unlikely, isn't it?
Even with this, you don't stop the traffic. I'm thinking you've got, there's a house just after, or this side of Swallows is being redone. Have you seen?
Yeah.
All the trees are gone finally and there's a heavy, I mean, real heavy equipment in there all the time. They're in and out. You've got the two lots subdivision that's being done. And then you've also got this construction company that's not a company with equipment in and out. It changes. I go by there on my walk probably twice a week. There's always different equipment. So to say it's not a company, I think that, I don't know what it is. That alone is a significant amount of heavy equipment going over this road. And that's why I think of a place by the field because those vehicles, I'm guessing, come that way. It's the shortest route.
Yeah, so just out of curiosity, yeah, so, so they go by the field probably.
Right, by anticipation.
You know, honestly, I'm as concerned about the area up in the, the twisty-turny part.
What you mentioned, that by swap, yeah, that's, that corner is.
Right, right.
Those are the houses that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, you know, very, the road is very narrow there and the, the turns are fairly tight. And if you have, you know, a forty-five foot trailer behind a truck, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I guess they probably wouldn't make it. The road is probably wide enough to accommodate them, but it wouldn't be wide enough to accommodate that vehicle and, and a car at the same time.
But I mean, I'm not inclined to, to submit this. My only concern is that staff have spent, you know, so much time on it.
I, I wouldn't do it for that reason. You know, I do think we provided a lot of the direction at M V P C. They did the base draft. We made some revisions and then a lot of revisions were made by volunteer committee members, which I think made it significantly better. One advantage I could see to submitting this, even if I think it's highly unlikely to be approved. But it's, I think it's a nice piece of work that illustrates our concerns and, and having that known to one more state agency, you know, is it's not a frivolous submittal. I think the numbers don't come close to meeting the standard in the M U T C D to, to really be eligible for this. So in that sense, I guess it's kind of frivolous, but it's well documented. It's not like a knee-jerk, like, oh, we don't want trucks. Like, it's a well-supported in terms of some of the subjective concerns. I think objectively, I think we all, I, I don't know, I, I think you made some good points about, you know, the reality is that how many trucks are there and what impact is it really have, but I don't think D O T would hold it against us to submit something and if, if they reject it, I, I don't think that's going to skew their consideration of some potential future petition for, for Middle Street or elsewhere.
I would also note that, I mean, I, I pointed this out last time, I think two point five ton is incorrect. That's like what a car weighs.
I think it's, it's, yeah, isn't it supposed to be pound ton?
That's what I would think. That's the definition of a commercial motor vehicle, ten thousand pounds. The first sentence.
Yeah, I see that.
What page are we on, Winnie?
Page seventy-seven of the packet. It's the first packet, first page of the, it's the very first line, it's the.
So, so actually, two point five ton is the, when you call it two and a half ton, that's the capacity of the vehicle? It's like, you know, a, a two and a half ton pickup truck is not, doesn't weigh two and a half tons. It's capable, it's capable of carrying, so like a, an F three fifty would be a, a two and a half ton truck.
So what about like the Amazon delivery truck for that?
Same Tesla Cybertruck is old. The weight itself of the vehicle is one, two and a half.
Well, no, it's, don't, the 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 weight might be, but that doesn't mean that it that it means the standards of what a two and a half ton truck is, so like if it's an F.
Gross vehicle weight, right?
Huh?
Gross vehicle weight.
No, I think that's a capacity, when you refer to it.
The DOT, that, what they use is the gross vehicle weight. Like a commercial motor vehicle is ten thousand pounds or higher. So. I don't know, a- anything further on this?
It's gone this far, I thought after the last meeting, I didn't know. I I my comment was, I didn't know if it was worth investing the time in it because the two vehicles in the study were insignificant. And those could be people who are making deliveries, most logically down that street, so, but you're at the point that it's.
Yeah, I guess that's, oh, sorry, and I I said the same thing. So I think we need to be more decisive if we're not in favor moving forward, so that we don't have staff and committees working on something, and I I feel. You know, responsible that I didn't say, no, I don't think we should do this, um, but I think we have to be more direct if we don't.
I was pretty direct at the time, so that's why I was surprised to see it back, but.
Yeah. Or is that a good enough reason to submit it if you don't?
So so because. Done at this point, I say submitted, I mean.
What would, what was the total time that the road was monitored for the traffic study?
Three full days and two half days, I think.
Okay, so, I mean, to me, that's.
Three full days, two.
That's not indicative of what's.
But those are probably local vehicles, right?
Right, and and so this isn't trying to capture local vehicles, so this is trying to capture trucks that shouldn't, that large trucks that.
Like semis or?
In, say it again?
Like a, like what kind of large truck that?
I I, you know, I wish I could recall who it was, I I spoke with somebody once who lived on the street, who who. Related having seen, you know, tractor trailer more than once. Not, you know, not frequently, and clearly it was something that somebody didn't, you know, or most likely didn't intend to do. But, you know, but a a tractor trailer, um, negotiate rivers, river road. I don't recall who that was, and it was, you know, it was sort of an anecdotal conversation, probably related to one of the times we were down on River Road. Um, with residents. Um, so I can't, I, you know, I I I, I mean, that could be three times a year. And, you know, but if it's a study for three days, it's not likely to capture that event.
So you would just distinguish the fact that it was not local by the fact that it was a tractor trailer? That's my point, how would you know if it's local or not? Even if you did the study for five weeks, you know, you have to stop each vehicle and say, what's your business here, you know, are you delivering or?
Yeah.
So I I think it'd be really difficult to establish the 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 vehicle traffic that you're hoping to avoid on this exclusion. I think it's more the cars and the normal traffic that are doing the damage right now.
That's not true, I mean, Wendy, just, okay, this is a mechanical engineer saying this, it's not light vehicles that does damage.
If you look at the number of vehicles here.
Yeah, but that isn't what does damage to a road surface, what does damage to a road surface is heavy vehicle.
It's just not.
That's, I mean, it's, 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 uh, you know. There's, there's, there's math and there's science behind it and and the deformation of the road there.
Okay, I don't see that math and science in this application, that's all.
Well, yeah, this isn't.
All right, um.
One thing on the two and a half ton, I I pulled up the MUTCD, this is the language here, so I think the verbiage could be clarified to say proposes an exclusion of. Uh, you know, commercial vehicles with a carrying capacity or it's just.
So would that be like a box truck, that's what I'm not clear on, is that the the capacity, you know, the carrying capacity of the frame or is it?
I think you guys know more about that stuff than I do.
I'm always familiar.
Box truck that easily carried then.
Yeah, so that's it, yeah.
Amazon truck, I don't think so, I don't know.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for making that up.
I mean, my personal concern is really heavier vehicles. Um, and, you know, I I, quite honestly, I didn't think significantly about the the limit that they have here. You know, two and a half ton, I interpreted that as being, um, as I said, like a two and a half ton. What would you refer to, a two and a half ton truck, which would be like an F three fifty, which is. You know, sometimes, uh, you know, dual axles in the rear and.
All right, any further discussion on this? Motion?
Yeah, I I'll make a motion that we, um, approve submittal of the, uh, vehicle exclusion, heavy commercial vehicle exclusion application.
One second, any further discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll post. All right. Um, next item is request to authorize, um, submittal of a notice of intent to the conservation commission, this is for the Coffin Street replacement replacements.
We do have Christine on it, in case there's any question, that's all right, I think this is a really routine request. Uh, we did get, she did get just earlier this afternoon from Wood of Spurges, a slightly updated, uh, plan showing, uh, I haven't worked on it yet, but Christine, I think you told me it was, uh. Some smaller cover than what was shown on there, uh, so. But, uh, it's really just, uh, you know, the, whatever.
As a property owner, is that why we're submitting the notice of intent usually?
Correct, yeah, yeah, because you're you're the road commissioners, so I, I wouldn't have authority to sign a. Application on your behalf without without your authorization.
I assume the butters are favorable to this as well?
Yes, yeah.
As reference to, we hadn't heard that, I would be if I was in front of it?
Yep. Yeah, Paul and Butch have both been out there, uh, quite a bit in Clay, um, and I've been helpful with, uh, you know. Talking with the neighbors on, including on the easements and things, and so those will come back at a future meeting, once we have the easements in a form that. Reflects the correct plan references and so forth, uh, it's a little bit premature now, but there have been conversations with the. Butters and all of the feedback, including some emails, has been, yep, it all looks good, you know, subject to getting everything in final form.
Do you need something such as a motion to.
Yeah, to authorize.
Allow the Concom to file the notice of intent for the comments?
Sure, authorizing town managers to sign the notice of intent.
That's exactly what I meant to say. Sorry.
All right, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item E is request to submit the shared streets and spaces grant.
This sounds unbelievably good, doesn't it, I thought it, you look at different, I'm making.
This is another one, I feel like, you know, we didn't give clear direction.
Oh, I asked, said, okay, I'll take the heat on this one, and I said at the last meeting, wouldn't this be a grant that would work for Paige? And they said they would look into it, and you look, this is almost like a dovetails in it, I thought this is like.
But you said look into it and and they've gone ahead and done it, so I, that's where I feel like.
Well, and the reason being, uh, and I I explained this to Wendy, the 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 last meeting was a day before I was leaving for, you know, holiday. And I knew the application was due January thirteenth, so if I hadn't.
Well, that was indicated that I assumed it was going forward, so I maybe was just too joyful and hopeful or something, I don't know.
So, yeah, I mentioned it, I've kind of gotten, uh, Katrina working on it, and she worked with Christine, because Christine's got all the source documents and. So forth, and so Katrina put together, uh, a a pretty good draft, I, you know, and, uh. Sent that to Christine on Tuesday, just two days ago, uh, I told Christine, don't spend time on it, just. You know, let's wait, see how things go tonight, but I I took a look through it, I think there would be no problem getting submitted by the end of Monday. Uh, you know, it definitely has taken between Katrina and Christine and myself and. Uh, correspondence with TEC, uh, you know, it's taken, it's taken some time, uh, but. We, you know, if if we submit it, we'll submit it Monday, if we don't submit it, that's fine, I think if we don't submit it, it's a great program, and there are gonna be other. Projects that we could apply for in the future, I think one of the questions I have is, do we wanna? Kind of use up a grant on something that's already fully funded, as opposed to looking to something, uh, that's inevitably gonna come up. In the future that's not fully funded.
Yeah, because that money can always get, would get turned back and kind of fund again.
Yep.
To me, I I think part of the problem, why this is so, it just seems like it fits this project almost perfectly.
Right, right.
Uh, it's got a very difficult timeframe to comply with, your documents are done, so I think the competition gets reduced on, I think you got a much higher. Uh, return on an investment here for opportunity.
What about the two hundred fifty thousand dollar limit, I wasn't clear on how that impacts.
Well, I think we would, I mean, I haven't seen the application, but it seems like we would apply for the for the limit.
Said applicants should only apply for projects that fit within the grant maximum.
Yeah, but we can, we fund the rest, they pay the two fifty is my understanding, whereas we're already funded, that's not even a question.
Right.
So that's the maximum we're gonna get.
I I I hear what you're saying, I I I I read it and thought about it and read it over and concluded, at least the way I read it was that. That's fine, they'll, you know, but they'll just fund two hundred fifty thousand, ideally, they'll fund two hundred fifty thousand and and the balance will be, um. Paid out of the already approved funds.
Yeah, it talks about demonstrates community support, we already funded, so that's a lot of community support there, safe travel to schools, pickup and drop off, we're all communities.
The the only, the only work we don't hit is the EJAC, or the environmental justice. Right, we can't hit that on anything, you know, so.
Right, I, I wouldn't even wait for a future project, because I think you're as good as you're gonna get on a submittal for this one.
Right, and 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 the other thing is, they say that one of the criteria was, um, you know, that they, um. You know, first, communities or municipalities that have not previously, um, received a grant under this program, well, that's us. And, okay, so maybe five years from now. Their standards, when they've now covered even more communities, because they've done, would have saved something like two hundred communities already, have been included in this grant program. You know, next time around, that criteria may change a little bit, because there'll be that many more communities that have that have taken advantage of it. Seems to me that that it's it's made for this project.
Okay. Any, um, questions on that?
I I actually thought this one was intended to move forward, went back at last, so. This one didn't surprise me, actually kind of pleased me, so.
Um, do you want to make a motion then?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager's staff to submit the shared streets grant.
All right. So how much additional work is this, to get this?
Probably under two hours, I mean, it's, the grant is, it's a pretty straightforward grant, and, uh, between the work Katrina and and, uh, Christine did over the holidays when I was gone, it's it's. Pretty well there, I, you know, I'm gonna need to spend a little time go through and, you know, go on a couple of blanks and. I don't know, Christine, you spent more time with that, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you say it's reasonable that, you know, a couple of hours of work between now and the end of Monday?
Uh, I I would say so, but, you know, these things, there's always something that might take a little longer, so half a day at the most. Um, because we just want to check and double check, make sure we, we've got it right, since this is the first time we've ever filled one of these out, but, um. I, yeah, yeah, I I think it should be, should be fine, the one, the thing that's a little tricky is they want the estimate and certain caps on. Uh, project management and contingencies and that kind of thing, so we have to double check those numbers, but, um, but we have all that from TEC.
Thanks, Christine.
Thanks for the work you did on it, too.
No problem.
All right.
And and I guess no concern, I I know, because it's always, there's always an issue of administrative overhead. Related with with, you know, but once, once it's done, we still, you still have to report and confirm.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it is, it's it's extra work, I mean, I, one of the things that just, it's. When I think about the amount of time and effort we've put in to get that warrant article in the fall town meeting, that was a lot of time. And we got the funding, and so, you know, I feel like.
What was the road number again?
Yeah, three six, three sixty, three sixty five, I think, or. So I feel like some of that time that we spent in, you know, the fall, now it's a big waste of time, because we kind of. Already put in a major effort to get the funding, we got it funded, now we're putting in more work.
I don't think that's a waste of time, I think it actually is a brilliant use of the time, because you've shown the community support, you've got the funding. The work is already done, otherwise, if you hadn't have done that, you wouldn't have the ability to pull this together for the grant in this time.
True, that's true.
So I think it's a great use of it.
Yeah.
It just.
All right.
That's a glass half full.
That's a, that's a glass nine tent full.
All right, on paper, calling by.
Thank you.
Um, item F is to finalize dates for the joint finance committee. So. Unchange one of these.
Well, so so the dates that I had, uh, that we put in the packet are the ones that we've previously reviewed with Rob. Uh, he had sent an email to Wendy and I this afternoon, all of the dates that he was, uh, saying today were the same ones, except for. The Wednesday, February twenty sixth, he had offered that as an option, and that is still something he's suggesting as an option. He would prefer to have Thursday, February twenty seventh. Um, I told him, I'd be concerned about that, because we've already got February thirteenth and March sixth, or your regular meetings are now already gonna be joint meetings. I don't think you can have three board meetings in a row that are joint meetings, you have a lot of other business to do, so. So I would suggest we stick with the five that we put in the packet, those work with the accounters.
I'm good with them.
Yeah, so February thirteenth, February twenty sixth, March sixth, March twenty seventh, day the third.
Correct, right, okay, yeah. And February thirteenth would be the the night the budget's presented initially, so that that's obviously a good one to have, uh, as a joint meeting. So I'll confirm, uh, those dates with Rob.
Next item is request to, um, approve, uh, change in the employee reimbursement policy. This is another one of the policies.
Yeah, this is actually one, this is a new policy, uh, not an amended policy, yeah, we do not have a written employee reimbursement policy, so I, you know, and the, yeah, that's. Part of, for a while, because, you know, I I can tell you, we've been, you know, we try to be consistent how we handle this, but. I think it will be helpful to have a a written policy that can be circulated to staff, and that way everybody is, uh, you know, knows how we're gonna.
It's funny, it feels like.
Well, you have, because it was part of the financial policies back in.
Oh, it was that?
Yeah, but it was never adopted.
Oh, ah.
Because because there were a number of tweaks that were made, we didn't just take the state template, and, you know, it's it's gone through a couple of rounds of review.
I was trying to figure out why it was in here, because I I was assuming that it already exists, so.
No, no, it's never been voted, yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Reasonable and appropriate to make that issues.
Yeah, very, can we adopt the, uh, boy, employee reimbursement policy that is included in the package?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Great, well, I'll get that posted to the website and sent to run it to staff.
And what's the next one on the docket?
Um.
Remote work?
That's on, there's a couple of kind of housekeeping, uh, like the the, uh, tailings and the rear end closeout, and some of those are still. On the list, yeah, yeah.
Do you hear for the Ash Street?
Yes, yeah, for Ash Street.
You've already addressed it.
You've addressed it?
Well, that was seven o'clock.
Our brother, our brother said seven o'clock. And I came into the, um, office earlier, and they said that you were starting at five thirty, this was a couple of days ago. But that we couldn't be on the docket until seven o'clock, because the butters were notified that it was seven o'clock, so. Want to retopify it?
Well, so we closed the public hearing already, um, I apologize for the, I mean, we're happy to give you a few minutes to say what you think, um.
Well, let me ask what happened.
How we voted to waive the town's right of first refusal.
Did anybody show up at that time?
No, we had no comments. No, typically, butters aren't involved in this first round, this is just a, you know, part of the town policy. So, um, we contacted all the interested, um, boards and committees who would represent towns. Um, you know, the town interest, should we decide to waive or not waive the right of first refusal, none of the, um, committees suggested that the town should waive the right. So, um.
Or should exercise.
Should, should, yeah, should exercise.
So I'm reading, I'm reading a letter to me.
So would you like to make a comment, you're a butter, I assume?
I assume.
So, I mean, we're happy to listen to what you have to say, if you could say your name and address, and then what your input is, that'd be great.
Well, first off, was there an explanation whether you knew the property? Well, first off, was there an explanation whether you knew the property when you had had your meeting earlier? I don't know what the property, what you're gonna do with property.
So so the the purpose of this process is for the town to say whether or not they want to buy it. So what is gonna happen on the parcel really is not what we're deciding. We're deciding whether we want to buy it at the the asking price. And use it for town purposes.
Okay.
So that that's the point.
That'll wake you up quick. That's a sign.
You guys are taking ground. So, you know, that is the purpose. That's why this goes out to each, like the open space committee, the historical commission, the planning board, and we seek input from all those town entities and saying, do you think the town should purchase this parcel? Instead of allowing it to go through the the private sale. And in this case, none of the committees said that we should.
Do we want to back up a little bit just talking about chapter 61?
Right, right, yeah.
Sure.
So so the land has is listed under chapter 61A, which it's got a tax, a reduced tax assessment for the for a number of years. One of the obligations of the owner is if they are proposing to convert the land to where it's no longer in that. Agricultural forester use, they have to, once they have a.
Purchase.
Purchase sale, they have to notify the town. The town has a certain amount of time through the board. To determine if it wants to exercise its right of first refusal, which if it does want to exercise, then initiates a process that involves appraisals and. A very constrained amount of time that the town has has to act. So when the notice was received, the first step is we send it to town council. They review that the purchase sale agreement meets the requirements of the statute, so that happened within two business days of getting the notice. At that time, we sent it out to the parties and the the town entities, which we referred to, which under the. Policies, the planning board, assessing, conservation commission, finance committee, historical commission, open space committee, park and rec commission, and water department. So notice was sent to all of those bodies. They all either, every one of them responded in writing to acknowledge or see. They've all received it. Only two of them provided substantive comments, both of which said they didn't have any interest in the town exercising its right of first refusal. So that's kind of what was shared with the board earlier. I I apologize. I hadn't noticed. Yeah, I mean, it obviously says 7:00 PM. I hadn't realized that discrepancy, and I think the board hadn't.
No.
So this this letter went out with my signature, but actually when I was out for the holidays, my assistant used my signature stamp. The the state law requires that if the board. Was going to exercise its right of first refusal, it would require a butter notice. State law does not require a butter notice at this stage. Our local policy does. So that's why you all got noticed. And I I hadn't picked up on the the letters at 7:00 PM, which it does, so.
So, I mean, we're happy to listen if you have specific. Concerns that you want to talk about, but the the question is whether the town should buy the property or not, not.
At at the price that it's under contract, because the town would have to match the price that the owner has it under agreement with the buyer.
So the town, the town was really deliberate. When, when and if, you know, the town were to decide to to exercise its right of first refusal, it would be for kind of strategic reason. And we don't attempt to compete with the market. We can't compete with the market, and we shouldn't compete with the market. You know, it's only if there is a legitimate reason, legitimate interest that the town has in in, you know, in in taking or purchasing land.
Well, like I told these people, it is bittersweet for me. Because if I if I had the money, I would not be selling anything. I would keep the farm as a farm. And as a matter of fact, I had even gone so far as to look into. Oh, I have just that one, I don't know, in Greenbelt, Greenbelt. But, no, I'm not, you know. Like everybody, I need some money to live.
Well, from what I recall, Pat, our properties up on the hill were a part of the original.
Yes.
And and that piece of it was sold, and our homes were built up there.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, and and. Don't get me going on that one. The town literally housed me up so long that I did not make a dime on that hill. Not a dime. And I mean, I can show you the engineering mills and everything, and and there was only because my husband had started that.
Yeah.
Um, and he died. And I carried it on because I thought that was his wish, that I was on top. But, oh, I loved coming through Kimball Lane and down through, which you'd see deer all the time. It was wonderful.
It is wonderful.
But. Well, things change.
I get it, and I understand that completely. I I guess my only concern is now, what is gonna be done with the property? And and do we have any say in that in terms of what might happen?
Well.
Yeah.
But I have two, what do you call them, two lots? Well, there's two, there are two lots.
Okay.
That are being sold. And that means that two houses can be built upon those two lots. So that's. All that can indeed happen.
And that's in addition to the one house that's already been built.
Correct, yeah.
Gotcha.
So potentially in terms of your involvement, I assume that we'll go before planning board, the development of those lots?
They are already, they they are already lots. They've been lots.
Building.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. See, that's why I know that there's already.
Do you mind if I stand up?
So it's this one Wells and the, not that one.
This one, this one.
This one, yeah. And so there'll be access adjacent to the near farm.
Okay.
That shared driveway.
So can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm just gonna do a share screen for those who are remote, so they can see what we're.
So I I just want to first clarify, I'm I'm happy to give you a few minutes, but this is not on our agenda tonight, this conversation, so we we have to be mindful of that.
Okay, I think this would be a quick question. So. This lot, all right, right here, is that the one that has the existing house on it or is that a separate lot?
The existing house is is here.
Okay, this is the existing house, and there's the new house that was built.
No, this is Pat's house.
Oh.
This is the new house.
Okay.
Okay. And this is the driveway that will access these two lots. If he, he's buying them.
Okay.
And if he, the idea we've been told is to build a house. And then sell this one. I don't know if he's gonna build two houses and sell this one, or sell two of the three, or if he wants to keep three houses, I don't know.
Okay. All right, yeah, this is our property up here. Okay.
Okay, so, okay. I know your house.
Yeah, we drove through your gate to buy our Christmas.
You 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 have the best lawn. Right, anybody.
Yeah, I'm a little anal.
They really worked on it, so. Ah, okay.
All right, and this green space is not gonna be impacted. I'm sorry.
That's how, that's how it's on green space.
Yeah.
That goes up with your.
Right.
Open space.
That's open space that we that we pay. That's, okay, gotcha. All right.
Is this one here?
Yes, it's, it looks like it's listed with multiple. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we share that with all of these homes along.
That's right.
The green space. We pay together.
So you have a buffer.
Yeah.
So now, as far as the process is concerned, how can, how fast can Pat be actually be able to?
So I have, as, you know, my follow up to to let, to let you guys know that the board is not gonna exercise a right of first refusal, so. The, I will send you formal notice of that.
Okay. And then she needs to go to the assessor to find out the back taxes that need to be repaid.
Yeah.
Can she do that as quickly as tomorrow, or is that?
Yeah, they're they're in tomorrow.
Okay, oh, good.
Okay.
Great. Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you.
Very nice.
Stay where our vacation is. You're welcome.
Sorry for the mix up on the timing.
No.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us survive. Calling this out.
Sure. You can stay if you'd like.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, throw them out now. That's a good one. It was good to see you.
Thank you for stopping, happening. Yeah, we'll log into it.
Thanks for your time.
All right, the next item is the.
Thanks, Pat.
Approval submission of the annual control officer designations. So these are just. The two officers that, this is annual, correct? Any questions on this?
Chair, make a motion that we approve the municipal, 2025 municipal annual control officer designation as included in the packet.
Second.
On paper.
I. I'll tell you.
Okay, move on to the next, November 25th. Under item A, the last sentence. That's not accurate, that Western Sampson will adjust their drilling. I'm just striking that sentence. I don't think it adds much. If you guys are already.
Just a question, was there some discussion?
There was. Jack wanted us to keep down.
Right, right, but I can't.
We said it's not really practical. You know, to evaluate in the field and make a decision by, you know, of course, we'd be making, I mean, I will speak to it. Project manager from Western Sampson and say if you, if the drill feels like they should go deeper, you know, let us know and.
Are you doing this?
Not yet.
So that's interesting. I know this is not on the agenda, so if I'm out of order, tell me and and I'll try to take that somewhere. You've got the gall right there, but. You know, if if the driller finds something that, you know, for some reason thinks that something else ought to be done. We could, and in my mind, perhaps should. Call an emergency meeting and make a decision as quickly as possible, because there's a lot at stake.
Yeah, I.
I I'm not suggesting that that ought to happen, but.
Yeah, my my thought was that we give the Western Sampson the ability to make that decision on our own.
Okay.
That's why we hired them. I want to express the Jack's concerns and his interest in going deeper, and if there's any reason to do that. We might as well let him go ahead and do it, and then we'll figure it out after, but. Yeah, we can have the technical knowledge. I don't know what we gain by calling a meeting and having them save.
Well, I just, I I wasn't envisioning acknowledging your chair, but I didn't. Think that that was something that. Fell under the, you know, unilateral discretionary.
Yeah.
Capacity of the chair.
I'm not saying the chair would do it. I'm saying they would make that decision in the field. I I just wanted to let her know that, oh, she already knows this this concern of deeper. Maybe we hire consultants all the time that make decisions, you know, in in the middle of the work, so. I just.
Yes, okay.
That that's my thought, or do you think we should approach it?
Well, no, the only reason why 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 I'm saying this is because. It would probably be a different dollar number, and a different dollar number would probably be higher, and if it hadn't been approved. I'm not trying to make it difficult. I'm just trying to make sure that we're that we're staying within bounds.
Yeah, so there's X dollars if they want the first well, they think they should go deeper or go ahead, but that means less money for the rest of it. I don't, I'm not talking about authorizing completion money.
Yeah.
We we can discuss it at the next meeting if you want to provide more.
Yeah, and I, yeah, this is not, I'm I'm not dissenting in any way. I just want to make, I'm just trying to make sure that we're leaving a, you know, completely legitimate path. To get more done if it's necessary.
Yeah. On the next one, on item B. I don't think Jack asked for select word approval on a letter going to Greenbelt. It says it demonstrated that with select word approval, the water commission would be sending a letter.
Yeah, I don't think he asked for, yeah, I I don't think he asked for approval.
Are you taking notes, or should I?
Yeah, I'm making these notes.
Okay, so just strike that select word approval.
Yeah.
You know what I think Jack probably said? If it's okay by you, something like that, you know, as opposed to. So in the, in that case.
He probably would not want this to stand.
Right, exactly. In that case, it's more just a form of speech, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Before, before you get that. Other item C, it says Reed Marlowe agreed with spring town meeting article would be required to cover any funded repairs.
Yeah, I, we just said if there were.
Yeah, maybe could could be required, I I, because I mean, I I think that would only be if the costs exceed their extraordinary unforeseen. Which I guess is kind of implicit in that, but.
Could just strike that sentence.
Yeah, it just kind of creates an expectation that there's.
If you have any questions, just all come down. That's the best thing you can do.
Yeah. I think the wording is.
Yeah, we see the capital plan outlined because.
It's really talking about an asset management plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so how would you change it?
Jenny suggested drafting a scope for an asset management plan.
And I'm keeping.
In the last sentence.
On the other side of my house. I have another eight acres, and I'm keeping that.
So I was looking at the first sentence, the apartment, you see the capital getting outlined? Are there potential use? Is that just the the capital improvement plan?
It's a little, it seems to be blending a couple of things, because what we were talking about was that outline for the water. Kind of financial plan, but then it seems to kind of morph into. You know, I had, I had been asking, I've been asking whether the capital improvement program and the list of projects in that is is in fact reflective of. Their priorities and whether they intend to bring something forward. They're gonna be proposing. And for Maple Street for next year for engineering, I kind of doubt it, because, but but. Any interest in tabling these minutes, just to, these could be something people go back and look at many times, and I think.
Okay. All right, the next step was. Any more meeting? I made the third paragraph. It says that the RQ will not be disseminated until a specific parcel is picked, which. That's not correct. Right, that was the whole point, that they wanted child study for both parcels. So we can just strike, but it will not be disseminated, right?
Yeah. I do think that might have been what she said, because I think when we opened the meeting, we kind of, yeah, then I got shot down, right?
Yeah, that just makes it.
Yeah.
And I just had a general comment in all, like, the factors that we listed. It would be nice if those were bolded or a line skipped out from, rather than just having it all like merged like that. So like traffic, stormwater management.
That is incredible.
I would rather not have, like, Reed felt that that would be better and handled to express concern, because those are the only two people that are mentioned. I think just the general conversation is better.
You want, do you want to table these as well, or?
No, I mean, those are. And the questions and comments, a resident identifies Bob. That was Bob.
Wow.
Again, the the resident names could be called out, like, maybe beginning of a paragraph, just so it's not like.
Make a motion to approve December 10th minutes and amended it.
So item F A is the project and priorities list. Given that it's the beginning of. Calving year, which was the the breaking point for our immediate and. Near term, we thought it would be good to just go over this again.
Yeah, I had hoped to update it. I I didn't have time, but hopefully this memo is is good in terms of some of the immediate things, and. I do think, you know, that what I'd love, what I'd like to do is get this. Actually, I'll go ahead and just put it up on the screen, that'll be there. Like to just get this kind of retooled to reflect what, to take things that are done off, off the list and.
Like the hazard mitigation plan.
Hazard mitigation plan, we just, we approved, yeah, just tonight, the.
Bellbrook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Greenbelt with St. John.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely.
Review that can come off, well, that's good.
Yeah, some, some can come off, some have taken twists and turns, some, there's some new ones, like, you know, when we did this, you know, versus the I B E W, we didn't have, you know, that on our radar, we do now. So I think it would be good to just get this updated, but since it's in front of you, if anyone has things they want to throw out there in terms of things that, you know, ask status of where things are, or anything you want to add that's not listed, I can just kind of take notes on that, when I'm looking to make some updates, I can try to reflect that, because I do think it'd be good to put this back in front of you with an updated form, ideally at the next meeting, to get you to kind of put your standard approval, because it has been helpful to have a document that kind of tries to capture at least the major things in one place.
So when things are completed, do you favor leaving them and drawing a line through it, or just deleting them?
I would delete them, I'll keep them in my spreadsheet, so I'll have a record, but, but, yeah, I don't see a, a reason to keep it in the one that's in circulation.
Would be interesting at the end of the fiscal year to, to look at what was completed.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I mean, I think it would, you know, reflect really positively.
Yeah, yeah.
And so as new things come in that aren't on this list, do you just automatically add them to the long term, or do you make a decision on?
So it's, it's a judgment call, because if it's something that comes up and is resolved in a week or two weeks, it's, it's just really not, we're chasing our own tail, so it's, really, I try to only if it's something that's really going to become something that's affecting time over a period of months or more. So before I left for, for, when you're, you know, for the holidays, I had Rebecca and I put our heads together on like, what's, what's the balance between kind of keeping a good track of like, those things that come up without, without just having like an ad nauseam list, and so she actually over the holidays put, gave it some real thought and put together a nice three run binder with, that she's got broken down by tabs and twelve months, and where she or I can just jot down, and it's right on her desk, so like, if something comes in that's, that's kind of brand new out of left field, she or I can just write that down and then, you know, may or may not make it into this, if it's something, yeah, like you said, if it's something that starts to take on a life of its own and become a big thing, then, you know, then we want to add it in here, but some of these things that come up, they're, they're, you know, they're resolved within, you know, a week or a couple of weeks of coming in, so they still take up time, but.
No questions or comments? It's pretty impressive, the range of projects that this town is, you know, working on.
You tied the stream and all.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing, I don't know if we have one here, or if we do where it is, but the whole issue of the parking rec field used to use, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think that's long term.
Yeah, so, so that'll be, that'll be really, really good, because as Wendy knows, from going to all those meetings, that's, that's been a long road, and it's brought with, you know, a lot, a lot of constituent interest in that, so.
One thing I was thinking as I looked at this, and I, I mentioned it to Angus, that, you know, we have several committees with bylaws that we've talked about revising, you know, whether it makes more sense to try to hit those all now, even though we plan to do a charter at some point, which would take care of all that, and you said that he, he felt like it's better to try to, you know, tackle the bylaws as we go and.
I think that makes sense, yeah, because it's hard to say.
When that.
When the charter was actually out.
Yeah.
And also at that point, you know, a charter would be, there'd be fewer things that'd be changing, because you've done it incrementally.
Yeah, so we should probably try to get at least one committee bylaw on each town meeting to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Harvard Committee, we had an interesting meeting with them, it's, it's, it seems pretty clear that that bylaw doesn't really match today's reality, I don't know if that's something we want to try to pack a recycle or not, but.
Yeah, the capital improvement committee has been under discussion, open space committee, mill pond committee, I mean, there's quite a few.
Yeah.
As well as the boards and committees that don't have a bylaw, that are just operating under state, the board of library trustees, the water board. All right, the next item is the recent dog bite incident at Mill Pond. These signs are great, I, I think it was very apparent in the Facebook conversation that people did not understand what their current existing laws were in terms of where dogs should be leashed.
There's a certain group that don't even care, by the way.
Granted, but.
That's your problem.
Well, but it would be good if everybody had a common understanding of where they were supposed to be leashed, you know?
Funny thing is, I was heading out, even before this incident happened, I was kind of went up over the hill and came out in the middle field, right by the fence as you go in, there was a sign that said, all dogs at Mill Pond must be reached, or something to that effect.
Yeah, those, those were put up on, on the road going in as well, so those are not clear.
Well, that's pretty clear, it must be.
But, but it's not, but it's not accurate.
Well, but that's different, one of those. Those of a foolish dog bite incident.
Yeah, you know the ones that, that Wayne had put up on the road going into Mill Pond? That basically all dogs should be leashed, which, you know.
Oh, I didn't, I.
So that's what I'm thinking, okay, I, I said that's probably not accurate, I said people seeing that would say, okay, I have to have it on a leash, so therefore deliberately saying, I'm not going to follow, you know, so.
So let's give a little background, because Rick had mentioned earlier, you, you know, so what happened, I got a call on January second from a resident, and she had already been, at that point, been in touch with police and animal control, which was, I told her was exactly the right thing to do, that's the right, like, wanted me to be aware as well. Her dog had been attacked by another dog. Her dog was on a leash as they were leaving, two dogs, she said, looks like, looked like they were circling prey, when I got closer, they circled my dog. This resident didn't realize until she got her dog home and was bathing it, that there had been a bite and it wasn't a nip, it was a puncture, it was a real, real bite, and obviously she was really concerned, wanted to do something about it, is following the process with police and animal control, had posted on Facebook, there's been forty or fifty comments, substantive comments on Facebook, including some people saying, oh, I've seen those dogs, she was describing what the dogs looked like, and other people were saying, oh, I've seen those dogs, so I've been almost daily touch with Lyra on this, to make sure that he and Kayla, the animal control officer, are really following any lead to try to figure out where these dogs live, whether they're local, whether they're not local, as well as kind of refreshing my own recollection of, if there is an instance of, if something rises to the level of a dangerous dog, which, as you know, that can trigger a hearing, to make sure that we collectively know what are those steps that, that are available to the board, so I did go ahead and, you, you probably recall Jim had gone to a training on this a year or so ago, and so I have for you, this is the statute, you can pass that down, but it's, you know, his advice was basically stick to the script, if, if, if this or some future incident ends up going to like a dangerous dog hearing, that you need to make sure it's, it's, you're following exactly what the statute authorizes in terms of process, as well as what options are available procedurally, or in terms of fines or penalties, so I had asked him, because I didn't go to the train, he did, I said, is there any provision, for instance, for, you know, if it was found out who owns the dogs that did the biting, to compel them to pay the vet fees, because one of the residents incurred vet fees on the order of five hundred dollars because of this bite, and it turns out the answer is no, even if there was a hearing, the board couldn't do that, you can assess fines, but those fines could go to the town, not to the.
Right.
It was agreed.
Right.
One of the remedies, which I get, you know, the statute sets out as the owner of a dog can be compelled to get insurance, at which point the aggrieved resident could file a claim against the person's insurance, but anyhow, there's.
That would be after the fact.
After the fact, yeah, so and one of the questions I asked was, let's say there's a non-local dog, this, you know, and it's established that that's the dog that did the biting, would it be within this board's authority to either impose a fine on that owner, or to prohibit that dog from being on town property, it sounds like the answer is no, that that's something that the board and the host community would have to have its own hearing, it wouldn't be under this board's jurisdiction, so anyhow, we've just, since this come up, we've just been trying to.
But when you say the board and the host community, would the community.
Where the dog lives, yeah, they, they could have a hearing, even though the incident occurred here, they could have a hearing, but it would be them having the hearing, not your board having the hearing, so anyhow, there's a lot of, you know, I just think we'd all be well advised to continue to refresh our understanding of this, so whether this incident or some future incident, when it comes up, that we're prepared with how to handle that.
Yeah, I mean, it was noteworthy on, on the Facebook discussion, the number of people that said, oh, my dog's been bit, or I witnessed it, or, you know, so I don't know how you, put that in the framework with the overall experience of people in Mill Pond, but it's just kind of unsettling to have a town property, you know, that people won't use because of the dogs.
A year and a half ago, I had the discussion, I, I don't go there anymore because.
Neither do I.
It's so terrible, they, if, 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 what I can tell, it's generally out of town, they're just bringing their dogs and just letting them run, not a provable statement, obviously, but that's what it seems to be, and they do, I will go personally sometimes just cut through, but if you're there with another dog, it's a mess.
Yeah, especially if your dog's on a leash, because that already. Yeah, stressful for the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we had talked about this, moving forward with a working group, you know, the whole dog leash issue, I, I feel like we should do a hunting bylaw, revision first, you know, not try to take too long at once, but this, this seems like a really important issue, especially because the animal control officer is hampered in her ability to, you know, to enforce.
Yeah, but I went after, saw the Facebook, and I went and checked the video, the town meeting. Citizens were definitely against the leashing component. There was a few people who stirred up the.
Yeah.
The crowd to get up to vote that way, but it wasn't a close vote by any means, so to bring it back right now is not gonna.
But if we bring forward, this area, you can have your dog off leash, and we need to offer something and not.
Well, this is, we did wrong, you have to have an alternative, yes.
Yeah, I think that's what the working group would, would, you know, provide.
Yeah, I. Quite honestly, I haven't been down at Mill Pond for a while, and it isn't because of dogs, it's just because I have been down there.
Yeah.
And, as I said, I, I want to try to get a better handle on what is there currently signage, and, and acknowledging that there are people who will ignore the signs, they'll just do what they want.
My concern is if there's conflicting signage, then that, like, people just ignore the sign altogether.
Right, right.
Yeah, so when I saw some of the posts on Facebook, and it was clear that, that there was a lot of either misunderstanding or misinformation as to the existing policy, I, I remember doing a fair amount on this a few years ago, and I tracked out in my email records correspondence with Wayne, we could, you know, you have to read the, you know, it's the Mill Pond management plan and the bylaws, and trying to kind of read them together to really understand what, where it's required, where leashing is required, where it's not, and back in, I think it was twenty twenty one, we had come up with these signs, which, whether we agree with them or not, this is, I think, an accurate representation of the current town policy, so we had, we had created these back in twenty twenty one, and the last email I had with Wayne was sending him a note saying, yep, these are approved, you know, run with this, and I, you know, I guess I had assumed these had been fabricated, posted, turns out they weren't, they were printed, laminated and posted, which is different, and they, I think they were just posted like in the kiosks, so I've since, you know, talked to Kate McParker and Butch, they're going to go ahead and order these like aluminum durable signs and get them posted.
Parking areas.
Several locations in Mill Pond, lower lot, mid lot, pipe state, I think they're ordering nine total, five Mill Pond, four pipe state included, but I have one extra, but they're going to post like three or four in each location, which, if anything, we might get blowback, it's too many signs, at this point, I've, I've got too many signs then, because I, I, again, whether we agree with this or not, this is the current policy and it's going to be for the foreseeable future.
I personally, I, those signs are great, but I think there's, there's. You know, sort of the, the, the mapping, most people aren't going to link, they're, they're not going to link the, the place they are with a map, and, you know, everybody here knows those areas.
Yeah.
Okay, but most people don't, and, and, you know, I think you just have to be much simpler, as a compliment to this, I think you'd be much simpler with, with signs in specific places that say something like, dogs must be on leash here.
Well, the language of the Mill Pond plan, it's like so many feet around parking areas, so I think that would be challenging to describe, you know, you'd. That's why I think they went with the maps, because that, that shows exactly what the plan says.
But even what this is not going to fix the problem, I mean.
No, but it's a start, I mean, I feel like we need to, you know, do something to acknowledge this whole situation, and to me, getting signage right, so people at least understand what the rules are, is the first step.
Does the Mill Pond committee have the ability to prohibit dogs off leash?
No, because they have the Mill Pond management plan, which says in there what the requirements are.
And that'd be modified. Well, it might be easier to go to town meeting again.
It's actually not easier, it's, it requires, it's, it's, it requires votes of the select board, Mill Pond committee, Park and Rec Commission, and.
Riding, riding.
No, it's not riding and driving.
But it's some other group that's.
Is it opens, it's either open space or.
Greenbelt have.
Well, so, so it's these, these bodies and Greenbelt, it's, it's, it's a, it's, because back in twenty eighteen, when I was new, anyhow, that's a great topic for, I can circulate what, to amend the Mill Pond management plan is extraordinarily difficult, much, in my opinion, much, much, much too difficult, there is a huge amount of inertia, because there's changes that I think would be broadly agreed, that have been known for at least six years, but because of the difficulty of getting all of these entities on the same page, it's, it, I, I personally put in many, many dozens of hours trying to get some housekeeping changes done, and I felt like I was walking into a bust off, I think ConCon was one of the entities, because that was one of the particular.
Bust offs.
Bust offs, this is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so we have different composition, but, but it was, my takeaway was like, I don't have time to burn to like, that was housekeeping, like, really housekeeping stuff, it wasn't policy stuff, like where dogs are leashed, so I think, in my opinion, Chris, changing the Mill Pond management plan is objectively more difficult and more time consuming than changing a town bylaw, which I think is really.
Says something.
Yeah, and I think that's, it seems like it was done by design, whoever wrote that in two thousand seven.
Well, again, what we'll have to do is have to have an alternative solution before you change the zoning.
Yeah, a town bylaw would preempt the Mill Pond management plan, let's say the town bylaw said all dogs must be leashed on all public properties, that would have override the Mill Pond management plan, but it will fail again unless we have a provision where the dogs can't run somewhere, so we've got to address that first.
Okay.
Jennifer, did you have any input? She's on the Mill Pond today.
Sorry, I've been sitting here nodding as you guys have been talking. Yeah, I mean, I, of all of the people in this room, I'm the one who goes to Mill Pond every day with my dog, so, and I, I don't, I don't find it to be a dangerous place, I find most people are very respectful, usually ask you if, if they're approaching you, would you like me to put my dog on a leash, you know, people are, are really good, and I go at all different times, so I know these events are really scary and troubling, but I do think you've demonstrated, people don't understand even probably what the etiquette should be, never mind. but I do think you've demonstrated people don't understand even probably what the etiquette should be, never mind um you know, just what the rules are, that seem confusing with all the signage, so the committee has been spending some time on this and it is on our project list uh for this coming year.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Um all right, nothing further than that, so the focus is gonna be to get those signs up, that's the next step.
Yeah, they've been ordered, uh so once they come in, uh which has been told, post them in enough places that they can't be missed.
Okay, very good. Uh I M C is the um feedback on the lower arch of the reservoir watershed base plan, from B T C uh to the town comments. This is just for information, really, Angus, right?
Yep. I'm just coming, I'm just kind of information.
What's that?
I'm not just gonna have information.
Okay.
Um I'm just stating, first of all, I know nothing, I read the plan when it came out, I didn't even make comments because we out of the realm of what I know and understand and deal with. I was very thankful that Wendy put together all her comments and questions, and very appreciative of all of people in town who participated with that, in particular Jack Dubin, because it was the depth that the two of you and the group of you went into was amazing. When I got out of it, I was, found the document they had put together, don't forget, Wes Newbury, we got this last, we were the Newbury reporter, gone through their committees and commissions and all approved it.
And it went to D E P.
Right, and then we get it, and the blatant egregious errors in this thing are staggering. I mean, the acreage is off only by ninety percent, you know, what's three thousand acres amongst friends, I guess. Something that grotesquely, it just makes me question the integrity of a whole document, and then their response back to you is is generally patronizing as hell. I I don't even know how you take, what they can put out seriously based on they put out that document, you found so many components that needed to be corrected and addressed and it was kind of brushed off. So again, appreciation to Wendy and Jack and the town employees who supported their input, but what an amazing process that we were left out of.
Well, I mean, I I hope, you know, I know there was some sentiment that we should not have even provided comments because of that, but I hope that by providing such a robust response, that we have gained some credibility and that they.
I I I'm sure.
Yeah. I hope so. But, okay, anything further on that? Are you off your soapbox, Chris?
Oh, no, we're on it for a long time.
Okay. All right, any comments on the the two letters in here, correspondence?
Yeah, will we get any response on the one to the U B I D S report?
These just went out in the mail, I think, on Monday or Monday.
I saw the data, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I I don't know.
Again, I thought it was a great letter, appreciate it.
Yeah, just as it said on that, I thought it'd be better to kind of talk offline first and then.
The second one.
The school committee asking.
Yeah, no, again, I appreciate both of them, I could do.
All right, great. So that concludes the open space.
Open session.
Open session.
Oh, one thing that we have, item E J is listed as taking up after.
Yeah.
Uh I I would uh say, so this is to do with uh the remaining uh, so I would ask that before table this and that this come back two weeks from tonight, uh I I uh got the information, we're always due recently and want some more time to work with the the department head before it comes back, so.
We're just recessing to executive and not returning.
Correct, yeah.
So we don't have a motion for that, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll say recess to executive session.
Second, call in favor.
Do you need reasons?
Uh for the reasons of the.